Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order for tonight's city council meeting. Please join us as we see the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Who brings us next? Roll call.
Haglund.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Prime Miller.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Mayewski.
Here. And brings us to our public forum for this evening, and we have, very happy to say, we've got two recognitions for Good Neighbor Awards tonight. And we'll start with PN Products and Peter and Holly Nora.
Don't.
This is not easy for them.
Sorry. You can't hide back there.
So, we are very pleased to present this to you this evening. You were nominated by Travis Lovefler.
Don't even suppose to drop the name. That's about the part of my ring.
And representing Fire Department. Whereas respecting and caring for others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we in Scandia thrive as a community. And whereas Scandia throughout its history has been the beneficiary of being a community of good neighbors. And whereas being a good neighbor demonstrates commitment, dedication, and caring for the community, and increases the well-being of its individuals. And whereas PN Products of Scandia has for the past thirty-plus years humbly dedicated itself to the residents and city of Scandia through its support of Scandia Fire and Rescue in quiet and remarkable ways. First and foremost, through its owner Peter Norris, thirty-five years of service as a firefighter, EMT, training captain, and assistant chief. And whereas at many points in the last thirty-plus years, the only available daytime fire EMT responders in Scandia were employees of PN Products who, while being kept on the PN clock, were released from their jobs to respond to Scandia Fire and Rescue calls. And whereas PN Products presently supports the service of two other of its employees, Fire Chief Mike Pines and Fire Chief or Fire Engineer Alan Rieden as daytime firefighters. And whereas PN Products has unfailingly, over the years, donated countless hours of annual wages to the Scandia community through support of its firefighter employees, donated the use of its facility as a firefighter training facility, accepted the fire department deliveries since the fire hall is not continually staffed, printed and engraved at no cost all of the fire department locker tags, helmet tags, and signage, and, and no.
Don't hide. He's gonna send us a bill here.
Whereas Peter and Holly Nora and PN Products have in these ways demonstrated the qualities of being a good neighbor and been nominated to receive this award. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Scandia presents the Scandia Good Neighbor Award to Peter and Holly Nora, PN Products in recognition and appreciation.
It's something we're really thankful and grateful.
He's a plastic stick reader.
My form's plastic.
Hope you can read my.
And we have a second Good Neighbor Award for Sharon Lund. Whereas Sharon was nominated by Holly Harden. Whereas respecting and caring for others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we in Scandia thrive as a community. And whereas Scandia throughout its history has been the beneficiary of being a community of good neighbors who have demonstrated commitment, dedication, and caring for the community. Whereas Sharon Lund embodies every quality of a good neighbor. She is mindful, welcoming, caring, helpful, hardworking, compassionate, friendly, and aware, quick to respond when someone is in need, has remarkable persistence and tenacity, and whereas Sharon.
She's a writer.
Whereas Sharon is a Renaissance woman, a dog musher, a reporter, a writer, a teacher, a grandmother, an explorer, a philanthropist, Bob's soulmate, a voracious reader, an artist in advertising, skilled in business, a fine cook and a loving friend to many, and whereas Sharon Lund has helped others in a hundred ways, big and small, from making sure someone has someone to sit with in a gathering, to seeing there is enough food to go around, to providing a listening ear during a crisis, and whereas for the past seventeen years, Sharon Lund has brought to Scandia the Elim Church to befrienders program, which leads small groups through a series of personalized sessions to educate everyone involved in ways of understanding and reaching out to those in our midst who are experiencing life challenges, financial crises, addiction, homelessness, depression, suicide, physical ailments, issues of aging, spiritual crises, hunger, and so on. And whereas this one woman, Sharon Lund, is responsible for creating this community of Scandia befrienders, people now eager to reach out to welcome and help those in need. And whereas Sharon Lund has in these ways demonstrated the qualities of being a good neighbor and been nominated to receive this award, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Scandia presents the Scandia Good Neighbor Award to Sharon Lund in recognition and appreciation.
Thank you. [applause]
Peter, Holly, and Peter, why don't you come up here and bring yours. We've done that before. Peter, Holly, and Peter, why don't you come up here and bring yours. Okay. How you doing, Shane? Feeling good? All right. The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. So, are there any additions, corrections?
Your Honor.
Yes. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else during this? Thank you. Public forum time who wishes to address something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Then we will move on to approval of the agenda.
So, move.
Should I have one item?
Yes.
We should probably have a discussion add on the end about filling a hard-time driver vacancy.
All right. We'll add that on to our business. Okay. Next is approval of the consent agenda.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then the consent agenda is moved seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public hearings, which is certification of unpaid charges for the 201 and Uptown Sewer System for collection with property taxes.
Neil, are you gonna address that first?
We are required to hold a public hearing before we certify any delinquent accounts for collection. You know, the, one of the, I know that one of the parties has contacted us and will be paid, however, you know, they don't have the check yet, so I would proceed with this, and then it would not be certified, you know, subject to the receipt of that payment. But, you know, on and beyond that, it's a matter of, you know, people have a chance to object publicly to, you know, the assessment on their property. Any bills paid between now and the date on which we have to certify those, obviously would not be certified.
So, do we ask for public comment at this time?
Yes.
With that introduction, is there anyone who wishes to speak? On that issue, all right, seeing no one, then we'll close the public hearing. Okay. And that brings us up to our committee reports. The Park and Recreation Committee.
Do we need to?
Oh, sorry. What are we?
I know that we approve.
Down here.
Oh, down here.
But do we have to close?
Right there.
Well, we approve.
It's later.
It's later. Okay. So, that brings us to committee reports. Park and Recreation Committee, Terry.
Mayor and city council, one thing I wanna bring you up to date on is the, one of the activities that we're involved with is planning for Winterfest. This year is a one-day event, one day only on January twenty-seventh. That's a Saturday. We have made some pretty good progress in getting the events lined up. We have a lion's breakfast from eight till noon. The Scandly Cup is the big, is the centerpiece of all of the activity there. That'll be going from seven AM till midnight, and part of that, too, we're working on some of the details for the beer garden to be set up and the tent right next door to that. We have a nice sculpture planned again this year. Fireworks are planned. I'm happy to announce that Gamal Garden is back in, back on with some of the events. They have agreed to do a kid-friendly crafts and food event over at the community center from one o'clock until about four o'clock. So, that's, they were out last year, but we're happy to get them back in some capacity. I unfortunately have to explain that the Coob folks, if any of you saw that last year, they had, that was a fun event, drew a lot, drew a lot of people, it was a lot of curiosity. It was fun to watch them play. But there, apparently, there is a big tournament, a Coob tournament. Who knew? I guess this is a big national event, and it happens to be the same, same weekend as our Winterfest. So, unfortunately, we won't get them there. They suggested that that may have been changed because of the Super Bowl events, and hopefully we'll get them back again next year. As far as promotions go, we are making progress. The sixth graders, again, are participating in button contests. We're gonna be picking up their drawings on Monday. We'll be judging those at the December fourth meeting. We have banners. We're gonna have four banners this year at north, south, east, and west, so either end of ninety-seven, either end of county three announcing Winterfest, and then the posters are just about ready to withhold. Once we get all the final details, we'll get the posters printed up. So, that's the big activity.
Okay.
And then on the agenda, you have the item from our last meeting as far as approval of the chair and vice chair.
Okay. Questions for Terry? All right. So, that moves us to the.
Right. Yes. You're right.
To approve the chair and vice chair of the Park and Rec Committee?
I was already doing that later, too.
This is a convoluted.
I know.
And there is a motion. Is there a second to the motion to a chair? I mean, you wanted to say the whole thing.
Yeah, let's.
Steve, what is your motion?
To approve Terry Gorman as chair and, Dustin Haglund as the vice chair of the Park and Rec Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
We're looking forward to Winterfest.
So are we.
Sounds good.
And that brings us to our planning commission report. Sherry?
Okay. The first item is a request from Nancy Sonnen for a minor subdivision at 20205 Oxborough Lane North. She has a six-point-one acre parcel that she's keeping four acres with an existing house and creating a new parcel with two acres. This is consistent with what we permit in the rural, general rural district in the comp plan. It meets all of the density, lot size, and other dimensional standards in the ordinance. You can see the new parcel. It's the one on the right there. So, it has the correct amount of coverage and size and buildable area. It meets all the dimensional standards. There are no existing buildings on the parcel. There is a wetland delineation completed for this site, as is required for subdivision. There is a location for a septic system. They've already been through the county process of looking at a potential area for a septic system, and county staff have approved that. The preliminary plot has the drainage and utility easements on it. Ryan took a look at it and didn't see any issues. The one issue for discussion at the planning commission was park dedication. There is a future park site west of parcel one, but it doesn't include parcel two, and there isn't any particular reason for, to ask for land from parcel two for a future park. And so, the planning commission's recommendation is to take the park fee of $3,000 for that new lot. The commission held a public hearing on this one at their most recent meeting last week. There were no objections to the subdivision. One neighbor asked a number of questions about how this parcel affects other parcels in the area in terms of potential subdivision, because we only allow four buildable lots per quarter-quarter, and her parcel would still have one unit, but within that quarter-quarter, that would be the last one then. So, there was a discussion about how this affects the other parcels. But based on the fact that it meets all the code requirements the planning commission is recommending to, to approve the subdivision with the seven conditions on page four.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Any questions for Sherry? Any discussion? Is there a recommendation?
I'd move to approve resolution 11211702 for a minor subdivision on Oxborough Lane.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that brings us to our next issue.
And that was your easy one for the night. This one is considerably more complex. So, we let you warm up on that one, just like the planning commission. This is a request from Bob and Jane Marching at 18605 Langley Court North, and they are requesting a variance to put a new house on this property. And so, this is the existing house. The front of the house and some of the impervious areas are only about twenty-five feet from the ordinary high water level of Big Marine Lake, which you all know is not only within the required setback, but it's within the shoreline protection area. So, the new proposed house actually gets outside the shore impact zone. This is the proposed location of the new house. It's impossible on this lot to create a house that meets all the setback requirements, but this one at least gets all the impervious out of the shore impact zone, and it also will be the required setback distance from the lot to the north. The current house is only about five feet from there. This would be ten feet, so it needs the side setback as well. This one has another complication in that the ordinary high water level and a wetland are immediately south of the parcel boundary. So, they have to be back from that ordinary high as well as the lake ordinary high and the wetland, plus putting a new septic system and a new well on the site. So, this is a complicated one, but they have done what they can to be as close to the road and as far from the lake as possible. And so, they're requesting variance from the setback requirement from the ordinary high in the two locations, a request for a setback from the wetland to the south, also a request from the wetland setback for the septic system, and then a request for a variance from this required setback from the road right-of-way. So, it's complicated, but in looking at it, the watershed district's recommendation is to approve it. They like the fact that this will be farther from the lake and outside the shore impact zone, and it does meet the requirements for things like well and septic separation and some of those things that are priorities. So, that, that works for everybody. The engineer had some requests to see a final grading plan for this. There are some issues about whether a culvert will be needed and how the drainage will work. So, you'll see some conditions about seeing some final approvals. The planning commission took a look at this at their meeting. There were no objections to this. The landowner and the builder both attended the meeting and asked for some additional guidance on setbacks and then what to do about vegetation removals, and the upshot of that is that they'll need to provide a landscape plan that shows the trees they're removing and how they propose to replace. And the watershed district will require establishment of a buffer, probably on the south side, as well as a bit on the lakeside, so there'll be that requirement as well. But generally, the planning commission found that they met the criteria for a variance. It is the minimum variance to get everything on this parcel. It is an improvement over the current situation. It's certainly a situation of practical difficulties related to the size of the parcel and having the ordinary high water line on two sides, which most people don't have to deal with. So, the planning commission is recommending to you to approve a variance to permit constructing a new single-family home, a minimum of fifty feet from the ordinary high to the east, fifty feet from the ordinary high to the south, fifty-two feet from the wetland to the south, and eleven feet from the road right-of-way. The variance would also permit the septic system to be located a minimum of thirty feet from the wetland to the south and fifty feet from the ordinary high of Big Marine Lake, and five feet from the road right-of-way. And then the conditions, which are mostly standard conditions about the permits that they need in the landscape plan, are on page nine and ten.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Questions?
Just one, Sherry. The, in the report, it talks about being connected to the 201 system. It's not one of the conditions. Is that something that?
It already is. The current house is connected?
Yeah.
I thought it was a new connection.
No. The current house is connected.
Yeah. So, they're moving the tank.
They're moving the tank.
They're moving the tank, and there are some issues about that, but otherwise, it's just replacing an existing, right?
Steve, did you have something?
I think, you know, this is a perfect example of where variances actually work.
Otherwise, there would be no, no new house.
This is the perfect example of it. I commend the site design and doing the best they can with a very limited site, so I like it.
I'm shocked. The last time you talked about variances, you said there's just no reason.
Absolutely never.
I don't like them as a rule, but there are times when they work, and this is a perfect example where we need, they need to work.
It's, it's just so good to hear you confess your hero.
I thought you'd wanna change all the ordinances again.
No, no.
Are there any other comments on this?
No, no.
Okay. Is there a motion then?
I would move to approve resolution 11211703.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to, I always wondered if I'd bring that. No. Resolutions approving interim use permit for the commercial kennel. Sherry?
So, this is a request from Patricia Nielsen Wilkie, who's here tonight, if you all have any questions about her proposed kennel. She is asking for an interim use permit for a commercial kennel on her property at 21775 Manning Trail North. It's in the general rural district and the shoreline overlay district. And commercial kennels are required if people are doing breeding, selling, boarding animals. And so, because she does a little bit of breeding, she is required to get a commercial kennel for the number of dogs she has on her property. The dogs, she has told us, talked to the planning commission about this, they're mainly pets, but she does sometimes occasionally have a litter, maybe once every couple of years or so. The dogs live in the house. They run in a fenced area in the yard. There is not a proposed separate kennel building for this one. They would continue to live in the house and have their runs out in that area in the yard. She has thirty-five adult dogs. She is asking for up to forty as part of this interim use permit, and says she mainly shelters, trains, and sometimes finds homes for the dogs. They're one breed. They're Shetland sheepdogs, and she has an interest in breeding the animal and improving that breed. We asked that a local veterinarian and a sheriff's deputy visit the proposed kennel site to do a report about the conditions on the site, because none of the staff are experts in this, and they used the forms and criteria that are used by the Minnesota Board of Animal Health to do an inspection on the property, and both of them completed inspections on October twentieth, and their reports were submitted as part of the application. The Board of Animal Health inspects only kennels that meet their criteria for a state kennel license, and she is not doing enough breeding to meet a, require a state license. So, they had recommended to the city staff that we have a local vet do an inspection, a local licensed vet, to make sure the conditions were okay. So, a local vet, who actually has been her vet for a very long time, did the inspection and report. The code requires a minimum of ten acres. Right now, she has about nine point seven, but applied for and received an administrative permit for an exception. You know, we do that because sometimes people lose a little bit of territory because of road right-of-way changes or something. Hers was originally a ten-acre parcel, so we're considering it a ten-acre parcel for the sake of this application. Her property meets all the setbacks in terms of the area where the animals are being cared for. They meet the boundary setbacks. They meet the setback from the well and septic system requirements. If people have a separate kennel building, they are required by our ordinance to have a separate septic system so that the waste can be washed into that separate system. In our last kennel interim use permit, the booths were permitted, since they had all the dogs in the house, to use their regular waste hauler to haul away the pads that have the waste. And so, that is the proposal here as well, that since she doesn't have a separate kennel building, she has a composter that we're requiring to be set back from the ordinary high water level, the same way we'd require any structure to be, but she will use that composter, and then the rest of the waste will be hauled away by her waste hauler and will need to meet their requirements for that. Based on the recommendations of the veterinarian and the deputy's site visit that the dogs are well cared for, there weren't any signs of abuse or neglect or ill health, the recommendation is to grant her request to have up to forty dogs and up to two litters of puppies a year. The planning commission took a look at this at a public hearing. They found that it met the criteria in the zoning ordinance for an interim use permit and a conditional use permit. We had only one comment at the public hearing, and those were some neighbors who said they never realized there were any dogs on the property, that they didn't hear anything from them, weren't bothered by them, and supported her application for the permit. The commissioners asked a lot of questions about how she cares for the animals, reviewed the site visits from the deputy and the vet, asked if there was a need for another site visit, and I think we determined not, based on having the one from the vet, who's a licensed professional, and based on their discussion that night and the fact that she meets the criteria, they are recommending to you to approve the interim use permit for her commercial kennel. as well, that since she doesn't have a separate kennel building, she has a composter that we're requiring to be set back from the ordinary high water level, the same way we'd require any structure to be. But she will use that composter, and then the rest of the waste will be hauled away by her waste hauler, and will need to meet their requirements for that. Based on the recommendations of the veterinarian and the deputy's site visit that the dogs are well cared for, there weren't any signs of abuse or neglect or ill health, the recommendation is to grant her request to have up to 40 dogs and up to two litters of puppies a year. The planning commission took a look at this at a public hearing. They found that it met the criteria in the zoning ordinance for an interim use permit and a conditional use permit. We had only one comment at the public hearing, and those were some neighbors who said they'd never realized there were any dogs on the property, that they didn't hear anything from them, weren't bothered by them, and supported her application for the permit. The commissioners asked a lot of questions about how she cares for the animals, reviewed the site visits from the deputy and the vet, asked if there was a need for another site visit, and I think we determined not, based on having the one from the vet, who's a licensed professional. And based on their discussion that night and the fact that she meets the criteria, they are recommending to you to approve the interim use permit for her commercial kennel.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri. Questions for Sherri? Any comments? Points of discussion? If not, then is there a resolution?
I move to approve resolution number 11-21-17-04.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're good. Brendan will get you a copy of the signed resolution.
And that brings us to item C, which is the water advisory committee.
That's just for information purposes, no action.
Okay, thank you. And then next, we'll move to our staff reports. You all saw the building official report. Do you want to comment on that?
Sure, I'll give you the update numbers. We have had, was, as Chuck references there at the bottom, 670 permits with total value of a little bit over $26 million. Last year at this time, we had 201 permits with a total value of a little bit less than $8.2 million. So, you know, as you mentioned last month, the big contributors are the Three Solar Gardens, which are about $10.4 million in value. That's the increase. The other thing that we had is we have 19 new houses with valuation of close to $6 million, and we've had another one this month. So, and that compares, you know, favorably with, I think, in 2016, we had 16 permits, 15, 14. And this year to date, we are now at 20.
Okay, thank you.
And that little storm too.
That little storm, I think that's responsible for most of the increase from 201 to 670. I think we were averaging, I think it's died down a little bit.
It's gotten a little quieter.
We were for about July, August, September, you know, most of October, we were averaging right around nine permits a day.
All right. Deputy Yetter, please report.
Mayor's counsel, evening. Just kind of go over some calls. Within the last month, we had two felony arrests out of Colbus Landing. One was for a warrant, one was for felony amount of narcotics. We had some shoplifting down at the new Blue Bell boutique down in, right there in Colbus. She was cited. We had another employee at the SA steal stuff, and they were fired and also cited. We did have kind of a weird theft at the SA as well. Somebody was able to come in, unlock the door on the diesel tank, use a wireless feed to override the pump, and they stole 115 gallons of diesel. And they were there for like an hour and a half. An employee, they would never have known, because they just would have switched the pump back to being controlled by the panel. But an employee pulled in, and he forgot to do that. Otherwise, they would have never have known. So they got the code through Minnesota Petroleum somehow. There's a code read, I don't know, it's a theft that we've never dealt with. So it was sent out to the seven-county metro to see if anybody has any information on it. Just kind of a weird, weird ironic deal. Some vandalism. We had one, a couple trespassing calls during deer hunting season. Those are taken care of by the DNR and then myself. The shingles have since been removed. I think with Neil's note and maybe some phone calls that were made, they have since been removed. We don't know who did it.
Oh, he didn't do it?
No, we didn't do it. Yeah, so.
Monday was the deadline day. I drove by Monday morning, and there was, they were gone.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Something magical happened.
Who did you send a letter to?
Canadian National.
Oh, it did really?
I got a contact at Canadian National, their office in Minneapolis, and we copied their enforcement person out of Stevens Point.
Yep, yep.
And somehow, the right button was pushed.
Yeah, and a couple extra phone calls to him.
We are a powerful city. We are.
So, yeah, something happened, the sun of the moon lined up like that. And then there's also, we've got a bunch of complaints of a boat that was dumped on Pomroy. Somebody stripped all the numbers off of it, every piece of information possible to link somebody, something back to the boat. It was technically legally parked. So it was kind of that line of, like, you obviously knew somebody dumped it. We did. There was a serial number that I found. I contacted the DNR, our Water Parks and Trails Department, tried to link that serial number to a license number out of Minnesota, which he left the Minnesota tag on it, and there was nothing. So me and Neil kind of went back and forth of what can we do without taking the boat and then somebody coming back? So it's up to the public works now.
And Andy, if you want to comment on that, what our options are? Because I think, you know, we made, before we even removed it, I think we made, the sheriff's department made best efforts to try to identify who the owner is without any...
And the DNR, and, yeah.
We've run into that in other cities before, where there's no real playbook. It's just best efforts to contact. There's statutes about how you can get rid of property that has just been abandoned. And so we might have to talk about that as we go up. So it's secured, and it's at the...
Yep.
Okay.
Does the fire department make it a whole boat?
You won't this boat.
That's my question about auction.
I mean, conceivably, I mean, we probably could put it up for auction and get something, but.
Yeah, right. So, and then the last issue I'll bring up is, I'm sure all you guys are aware, the death on Olinda. Right now, for the sheriff's office, we did receive the call on Sunday night at 9:56 from a neighbor. We went out there as a welfare concern, found two deceased individuals in the home. The BCA came out to assist with the investigation along with four or five of our investigators. They finally, the BCA departed at, I think, 8 o'clock the next morning. So they were there for close to 10 hours. There's no threat to the public at this time. It's still an open and death investigation. They did release the names of Melissa and Clarence Seifert, 65-year-old female and 66-year-old male. But at this time, that's all the information that I can release on that. So. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
All right, thank you, Brendan.
Okay.
Bring to our fire department report, Chief Heinz.
Good evening. You have my report. We've been doing a little more training. As some of you know, we have a house that we're going to be burning on Old Field next month. So we've been trying to put in a little extra effort to get some real-life training out of this house before we burn it down. So we've been having a little bit longer than normal trainings and getting every moment we can up there. So. And then if anyone's interested, we've done it in the past. We have one of our own burns. Any of the council would be interested in going into a fire once to see what it's like, if you're willing, welcome to contact me. We're going to be doing the burn probably first or the second weekend in December. So if you are interested in going into a house that's on fire.
Wouldn't be.
But we have to know a little bit ahead, because there's some stuff we have to take care of before we just let you go wandering into a house, so.
Okay, any questions for Chief Heinz?
I think the one thing to add in the bills that you approved was training for new firefighters. And Mike, you may want to comment on that?
So all our new EMTs have started their EMC training. The 14th, they started it. They're doing it at our fire station. So we have 10 people in our class from Scandia Fire. And then we've also got a person from Marine, a person from Wyoming Fire, and a person from Shisago Sheriff's Reserves. So there's 15 people in the class that were hosted at our station. And the instructors are the same, same group that do the instructing at the Forest Lake High School. So they will be doing that Tuesdays and Thursdays for the next three months or so.
That's an impressive commitment.
It's a big commitment, and they don't get paid for the training portion of it. So, but they've all started it.
Much appreciated commitment.
All started it, and like the instructors, and they're very happy that we were able to get enough people to do the class here in Scandia, instead of having to send them to Sentry or another fire department elsewhere.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? All right, thanks very much. Brings us to our city engineer. Ryan?
Mayor's city council. I have my report. I do have a couple items that I want to go in more depth with tonight. And then one addition, I did bring a report card that I received at a conference last week. It's basically the 2017 Infrastructure Report Card. That's a comprehensive assessment of America's infrastructure. So it'll give you a wide variety of information throughout the U.S. And in the works is also one that's being developed just specifically for the state of Minnesota, you know, so this will kind of be broader information. I'll give this to Neil and let you guys pass it around, look at that, just some information, some of the things that I see on a daily basis. Moving into my reports, I specifically want to talk about the last two bullet points, where I've attached a couple other items for discussion. As you know, Washington County's moved in basically forward with a maintenance project in 2018 on County Road 52 and Olinda Avenue, or County State Aid Highway 3. Neil, Adam, and I have prepared a number of comments of things we wanted the project to look into. And one of those things that has brought up some safety issues and concerns is the current pedestrian trail connection to Olinda Trail at County Road, County State Aid Highway 3. They're just north of 195th Streets. Just want to be upfront, the county's not requiring us, I've confirmed that, they're not requiring us to realign the trail. We've just gone through a number of conversations. We just want to engage the council with. And first, it was requested that they would add shoulder to that area. So if you were traveling down a pedestrian trail, and then come into the area of the red, you would have a shoulder, a safe area, then you could make a decision whether you cross a road or go north or south, as right now, there's a bypass lane there. So if you were a driver, you're driving north, and you want to take a left on 195th, and you've got cars behind you, they're going to pop out in that bypass lane. So you can imagine, it's probably not the safest spot to have a trail crossing, and, you know, what currently is out there for delineation of that crossing. So as you see here, you know, we, county shows this is something that they could support. We also inquired about, could you review the probability of removing the bypass lane? They just felt that they had too many left turns there, that, and that big of traffic control change, that would lead to rear ends, and thus why the bypass is there today. So this would be an option. I'd have just prepared just a conservative cost estimate, I think. Certainly, I think we could get quotes in doing this a standalone project cheaper than what I have done for you within your packet. They discussed very thoroughly what's in the scope of the work of the county versus what the scope is going to be in the city's project in 18. They don't really have much excavation on their job. We certainly are going to have probably a lot of culvert work and excavation here and there, and some ditch work. We are basically in the border limits of our project, as you can see right on the right side of the picture is 195th Street. That was, is going to be in the 2018 project. So we would be there. Our project doesn't have to pay prevailing wage, the county's will. So, you know, that's one thing that we could decide at a later date, if you wanted to include it in the 2018 project, is just an alternate, simply to get the bids and review it. And if you like the price, maybe it's much lower than what I have shown you with a conservative estimate, you could award the base bid plus alternate one. Or if you don't want it, you like the way it is, we'll continue to work with the county if we can get some better delineation on the crossing. And then we would award just the base bid. So we just wanted to bring this up for discussion. I don't need exact feedback tonight. You can think about it, ask more questions now or after the meeting, or whenever. We certainly would probably want to tie things up later part of December if we're, you know, with the county, just so they kind of know what we're doing incorporating their project. You know, potentially, instead of just realigning the trail right there, you provide a crossing somewhat there, but then have trail extension either side. So you got a safe spot to get across, and then bring them back down to 195th. But the most economic thing, I think, would be to realign it if that was something you guys were supportive of, or if, like I said, if the bids come in and something you not want to entertain at this time, we'll work with the county on better delineation of that pedestrian crossing. Just something you should be aware of.
What, I guess, I'm kind of, where does this trail come from, and where does it go?
Right into the parking lot, to the east of Hay...
The Hayley School. And it goes from where, when you go down 195th to the west, where would you be going for that?
Old Marine Trail. 195th connects right into Old Marine Trail.
No, I understand. I'm talking to the west, across County Road 3.
It stops there.
It just stops there?
It just stops.
So the crossing you're talking about across 3, it doesn't go anywhere after that?
It would facilitate a bike crossing across 3.
I gotcha. That's what I meant. Okay, all right.
Probably the intent of the original construction was that, once you got to the county road, you had, you know, obviously not right here with the bypass lane, but north and south, you have the pretty wide shoulders that are used heavily with recreation use.
And is it 195th part of that Sand Lake Trail?
Yes.
Lake Trail.
Yeah. So food for thought, please provide some callbacks, whether it's negative or positive. It's something that we want to continue discussion on that, so.
Well, I do have, frankly, that's the way I leave home every morning. And at one time, that road went all the way through. And a few years back, shortly after I moved in, there was a realignment on 3, and that road got cut off. And then they created that trail. So I'm not sure I want to spend $20,000 to realign it, when, one, nobody uses it, and, two, what would the realigning really accomplish? Either way, you're going to be realigning it to the bypass lane, just maybe further up the bypass lane.
It would come into the bypass lane, but it would bring you to the intersection, so the vehicle sitting at 195th would be able to see you. I did drive it tonight, and unless you got some crown in the road, right, unless you're really looking over there, and somebody started jetting, you're not seeing that. You're going to be looking right at traffic head northbound, and you will be already in motion. If somebody, worst-case scenario, right, is all, everything has to line up the wrong way. But it has, and it has on that 97 corridor, just west of here, last summer. I mean, you couldn't even imagine all the things that would just, how did everything line up like that?
If you raised that up a little bit, you would solve that problem, because you're still going to have the slope for the ditch that you're going to have to contend with no matter where you hit that curve. Whether it's 10 feet further or 20 feet south, you still have the visibility problem if you don't raise it to grade.
I think raising the grade right there is not going to decrease the situation of safety.
Okay.
It's just because that, you're that far out of that side of that vehicle, that's already, especially if they're taking a left turn. Where are you looking?
I'm always taking a left turn, and it's a curve, and you have to be looking both ways. You can't be looking one way or the other. I'm frankly looking more to the north than I am to the south, and that's directly into where that bike lane would be. Because that's the lane of traffic I have to cross. So I look that way more. And I have plenty of sight line to the south.
You guys certainly have time to make decisions. This conversation is great, because it's obviously brought awareness to it. So now that you guys are driving it, you can see maybe some real-life situations that might occur.
Okay.
And we'll, you know...
Is that something we can put on a work session agenda?
That sounds good. Yeah, that sounds like a way to handle it. Thanks, Ryan. Did you want to comment on that?
One more item. So right now, for public comments, is the Washington County 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. I did a draft in there, basically kind of highlighted that we would like to see some pavement, excuse me, some pavement maintenance project identified on Manning Avenue and the intersection of Manning and 97, along with trail park development in northern Washington County, specifically related to off-road regional bike trails along County Road St. Highway 4 and County St. Highway 15, and Gateway Trail corridor expansion, and then some supporting information below that. These are due to be submitted tomorrow, but we wanted to have in front of the council prior to just Neil and I looking at it, and any offer, any suggestions or feedback. But I would like to submit to the county tomorrow, so it's in record for the public hearing that's coming up December 12.
Are they ever looking at putting around about that 15 and 97?
That's been an attempt in the past. I know they've tried to do some cooperative or joint funding opportunities with MinDOT, so it's... It's just, you know, you just got to keep trying, right? There's, you know, lots of times when some of those grant opportunities come, there's unfortunate situation that occurred. But, you know, I'm very aware of that intersection, you know, I see it A&amp;P M all the time, I see it at night driving, you know, with other communities that I work in, and I have a difficulty time seeing stuff at night. Maybe it's simply just getting improved lighting there on a short-term basis, or some other things that have low cost, high benefit, just to improve safety.
Yeah, I know, there's definitely worse intersections near that area that are maybe a higher priority, but just interested.
I just want comments to come on behalf of the city of Scany, because if we don't ever comment anything, then the other comments in the county are going to be addressed, and we won't have things occurring in our area, and, you know, just trying to advocate for better infrastructure for you.
Is there a specific thing that you'd like to include in this, then, Christine? You said there are.
Possibly, I think I like the comments that are there, the bike trail extensions and all of that. But I think it'd also be good to take a look at that, the safety issues at that intersection, and if a roundabout at some point might make sense. I don't know if the rest, how the rest of you hear about that.
I thought you had said there was another, there were other places that were worth.
The other intersection is the intersection just to the west for North Shore Trail, and it's not in Scany yet.
Oh.
I think that's probably a worse intersection.
Some information related to that, actually, the city of Forest Lake submitted a large bond request that's significantly large on a number of intersections on Highway 97, and that intersection's included in that. That would include a designated left turn lane and some reshaping of the hill, actually. And wide enough shoulder, even though, you know, you would have to extend the road out to get that left turn lane in, but continued shoulder through there, so if pedestrians or recreation is being used on the shoulders, that they don't get cut off on that turn lane, you know, how they bump out. So there is, there is a momentum going after trying to get those elevated faster and built. I know MinDOT's been very involved at that intersection specifically, so.
Case you have. A bypass like that would be very nice.
Yes.
So do we have any action on this tonight that we have to do, or is it?
Just the nod, because.
The nod?
I mean, you know.
When does this have to be in?
I would submit it tomorrow.
Oh, we really don't have time.
No, no, I think, all right, I like what they've got submitted.
Is that something you could do, though?
Why didn't you bring it up right now?
Well, one of the things that we've been looking at is that intersection of 95 and 97 has a potential scenic vista, scenic overlook for the Sink River Valley onto the Wisconsin Bluffs beyond, or the Zabrel Mining Site, holds every mining site. And Neil has had conversation, or a communication at least, with Washington County. And I think maybe putting something in about that would be, would be an appropriate thing to have here, too, because we have had some conversation with him about.
Not really with the county yet.
Wasn't that, though, who was the woman that you heard from?
That was the state byways coordinator. Have not had conversation with the county, even though, even though.
That was from the county.
No, even though it was, you know, mentioned that they may have an interest in it.
If that's something that's still early development or farther, one thing that I should note is the county has, I believe this person is now actually working, because last I knew, they were going through all the background checks and stuff, but they'll have a full-time parks director now, where previously Wayne was trying to handle both roles. But they've been really ramping up staff wise on the park side of things, then that'd be somebody we'd certainly want to engage on stuff like that, and just because it's not in the CIP for, say, 2018 and 19 projects are pretty well defined, just how long it takes for delivery of some of these county projects.
Okay, this is the capital improvement.
So let's just say we're not in the CIP right now for 2021, '22. We could submit a letter next year that all of a sudden would get into it, right?
Okay, and that might be, might be a little more difficult.
This is offered annually. They go through this process, and they actually did it very robust this year, where we met very early, and there were a number of things that were identified, specific things, too, so.
Okay.
Just want to give you a heads up on that, if it's something that we can't quite define yet, or we don't have the county involved yet, if maybe we want to get them involved, because right there, we're talking two state highways, 97 and 95, instead of a county authority there.
Okay. I'm good with that. All right, any other comments for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I have a 62nd Municipal Finance update, which I'm sure everyone's excited to hear, but I don't know if you've been following the federal tax law that's been bandied about. The U.S. House and the U.S. Senate sort of have their own laws, and it does affect potential projects. The House version eliminates tax-exempt bonds for private activity projects. And those are the big projects, airports and hospitals, but then things that may impact this area would be senior housing projects would get more expensive to finance, because there would no longer be able to be financed on a tax-exempt basis. There'd have to be taxable bonds that would be issued for that, so whoever invests in those bonds would have to pay income tax on them, whereas now, they don't have to, so they can, they can invest in these projects at a lower interest rate to the borrower. I worked on one of these in the Twin Cities earlier this summer by Dominion, which is a senior housing provider, pretty active, and they did a large project, did $25 million worth of bonds issued by the city, which was just a pass-through, the city has no obligation, but Dominion could borrow the city's tax acceptability to issue, issue bonds. Now, if this, if the House version of the bill goes through and gets signed into law, that would not be possible anymore. The Senate version does not have that in there, so that'll be ironed out as we, as we go along. And then also, there's a proposal to eliminate advance for funding bonds, so if the city wants to refinance some bonds that aren't eligible for that until the future, like a year in the future, anything 90 days in the future that you, that are not callable, you can't do that if this, if this passes. Which hamstring cities to do some long-term financing, planning, to take advantage of interest rates that are lower, perhaps now, and then refinance debt that comes due in the future. So kind of, were some things, but the league of cities is keeping an eye on it, and a whole bunch of people are, so you'll probably hear about that as we move along. What some people think may occur eventually is they'll just take away municipal bonds to be tax-exempt total. So then that would save the federal government money because they're not subsidizing these projects with a tax-exempt rate, but then that would make borrowing for your streets and utility projects that look more expensive. So something to just be wary of.
Okay.
On that fun note, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Questions, Randy? Okay, that brings us to our Adam's report, and he's not here, you want to?
He is not here. If anybody has any questions, I can, I may be able to respond.
Okay. You've read the Public Works report. Anybody have questions about it? Okay, hearing done, can we move on then to our city administrator report? Neil?
Yeah, and there I referenced nuisance dumping, that was a good one, we won that one. 197th Culvert, this is a project that, it was down in the ravine, kind of below where, below Dinosaur Hill. There was an area there where the Watershed District's project, a lot of the soils that had slumped off that slope had been down there. The other issue there is that there are seeps, and that over the years, there were three culverts that through the freeze-foss cycle, rose up to near surface level of the road. Those would freeze, so we had ice over the road. So we managed to, through Ryan's help, and we managed to get the Conservation District to come up with a methodology and to determine kind of estimate what the historical inlet elevations were there. And then we've replaced those three culverts. And then the other thing, at the same time while we were down there, the Watershed District contracted to remove some of the material that had historically washed down that ravine. So I don't know, Ryan, have you had a chance to look at it?
We'll probably need a little more touch-up work, especially once you see some traffic on the road, you know, continuing, especially with the freeze-foss cycle, it'd be nice to go through that, other major, you know, it could be simply as placing some seal coat sweepings on the road surface next year, and it should be good. But should also note that one of the culverts was also showing significant signs of corrosion, erosion, so it was going to fall through at some point anyways, and the other one had early signs of that, too, so significant improvements, but hopefully we don't have that issue, and it'll help a lot of things.
And there are also now concrete culverts that are larger, so hopefully that will not be an issue. Berkshire Hathaway, the solar energy project, we've had a number of complaints. As a matter of fact, there was a meeting there this morning with Exile Energy and the developer and other parties. We've had, there were a number of complaints that the, go over here, the interconnect, the poles for the interconnection between the solar farm and the electro, or into Exile Energy's grid were placed, and I think people were surprised at their visibility, just to, give you a little bit of reference. Let me jump over to, if I can find them on here.
Close the three, there's nine dots to the southeast of that intersection.
Yep. There are six of them that are presently up.
And we'll, we'll bring up a bunch of those as soon as it decides to load.
The same type of array as being put up on 97, because we have Nicholson's, too, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the.
Those interconnect poles are terrible.
You know, one of the issues there is that those, you know, Nicholson is really, even though it's a five-megawatt system, it's five one-megawatt systems, and each one needs to be separately metered. So each one of those, you know, they're, you know, they're going to separate poles with meters, and then being grouped together, and then into the grid. Well, the same thing's, you know, happening here, so this picture I took this evening, just as an example, you know, from the, you know, right at the stop sign at 95, so you can see, you know, the array right now of, you know, six poles that go over to this one, to this one, and then they cross over. And, you know, the, you know, issue has really been the, you know, the visibility of those, and how it impacts the, the view of the, of the river, because, you know, that, you know, that, you know, that is one of the nice views when you come down there. You know, it's unfortunate at this time of the year that some of that, if you look, you know, could potentially be screened, you know, it's with deciduous trees. There is a, jump back here, by the planning plan, you know, there are, oh, this is the landscape plan that shows the plantings there, however, you know, these are six feet tall, and these are 20 feet tall, you know, plus.
Yep.
So, you know, the takeaway from the meeting is between, Exile is going to, obviously, they are not going to do it for free, because everything's governed by a tariff, that they are going to take a look at what the cost might be to relocate those further to the south, so that they would be behind more trees and a hill. And then that would, you know, you know, cause a discussion in terms of, you know, if that is feasible, how could that be financed? And whether it's something from the, you know, the developer, you know, other sources, you know, that becomes open, but I mean, you know, we've, you know, at least there's been some dialogue on the issue. Christine, you may want to comment?
No, not at work. I, it's one of the, this happening is one of the reasons that I am very glad we decided to stop these until we see the implications of what they are, because we, my, one of my takeaways from this was, they could have put in a box like the one at the old mining site on 15, where they do not have these poles. But this company decided and went with both at Kevin's and at the Zabrel site to do these large power poles. And had we been aware of that, and that this was an option, then we could, it's something that we could have dealt with. Also, the, how obtrusive they are, I was just kind of blown away. We, all the time, we spent shielding and screening for the solar panels, and then we have these massive power poles. I think they were, well, we're under discussion, they were going to look also at the, at possible, other, other things that might be done, other ways they might mitigate the effects of it, and we'll just, we'll have to see.
Yeah, the reason they're that close to the road is that Exile, they need to get their trucks in there to service those, so they need, you know, a hard surface, you know, that, you know, can support that large of a truck to get in there in case anything happens.
Although they were quick to say they could just extend that gravel road that they'd started further to the south, and that would do it.
A little concerned when you say other, you might be willing to relocate these at the developers or some other interested companies' cost, and I see in the plan, you mentioned the city, as one of those potential others?
They threw that out, I don't know if there's any willingness on the part of the city to, to look at that, but who knows what the cost is, and whether other sources can be found.
Just curious, are those poles along 95, or along the driveway entrance into the pit?
They are along the driveway entrance into the pit.
Any of them potentially within MinDOT's right-of-way that they don't permit properly?
No, they're all on.
Good try.
Nice try, Ryan.
Sounds like a lawyer.
If you spin around, Ryan, this line here is MinDOT's right-of-way, right here, and the poles are back behind there.
Yeah.
So they're well off the right-of-way. As a matter of fact, there's, you know, if they were going to look at more screening, there is adequate room between the right-of-way and the poles, but they still need to, the other issue there is they still need to get clearance from the overhead lines. So it is not an easy solution. May Contract has not responded with regard to the.
Can I talk about the gateway? No. Nothing to say?
Nothing really, just, you know, beyond what's there. May Township hasn't responded. If they do not respond, it's kind of interesting that the previous contract calls for a month-to-month at a 5% appropriated increase, so I anticipate, I think they have a meeting coming up beginning of the month, hopefully they will respond at that point in time. The ship grant, if you recall, we worked with Bolton and Mank on a ship grant for the, through the county, Healthy Living, and that helped fund some of the public outreach that we did for the comp plan, and the requested reimbursement was $13,528, and today we got a check for $13,528. So that worked out well, and that allowed us to undertake probably a little more outreach, and we probably, you know, that enabled to do more of the surveying that we did. Two more items that I want to talk about a little bit, this Washington County Bold Planning Demo. The county has software that they're using to develop their emergency operations and continuity of operations plans. They are licensed, they're in the process of licensing this, so that 30 communities in the county can use it at no charge. They're going to be sending out letters to us, but I think it is, it's kind of a Claude Blade-based solution where multiple people can have input, and I really like it, because it's kind of a checklist, what works for us. So in terms of fire department response, sheriff's department response, public works response, administration response, or whatever, it's, you know, what I like about it is it's kind of a check-down template, you know, we, yes, you know, this is in our plan, but the other thing that's nice is that it has all the phone numbers, contact numbers that you would need in the case of an emergency. So if something happened, and, you know, we don't have emergency, we don't have enough fuel for our trucks, or, you know, you know, who do you call for to deliver fuel? Who do you call for a backup generator, because we don't have an emergency generator? Just to have all that, where you could have it on your phone or on any device on the cloud, I think it's a worthwhile investment, and I mean, it may be something we implement over years, but as long as it's. But as long as it's available to us, I think it's gonna be a great tool. And I'm appreciative of the county offering it to us.
No charge to the city?
No charge to the city. It's just, you know, our time and effort to, you know, to work on it. And I think a lot of this can be done, you know, you know, by, by staff too, you know, by, you know, staff within the office. So it'll be a good exercise, you know, to work together. The other thing, we will probably be getting a, an appeal to be heard here with regard to wetland fill. I signed the note, we had a technical evaluation panel meet about this wetland fill and I signed the notice of decision and mailed it off, giving the owner 30 days to appeal. That's, you know, consistent with what's in our, our development code with regard to Board of Appeals. And the council serves as the Board of Appeals, so I would anticipate that that will come to us. And I think the final thing that I will be posting, I think next week, is we do have, it's kind of an annual thing, we have terms expiring, five-year terms on the planning commission and wastewater advisory committee. And we will get those posted, take applications, cut off applications probably a month from now for the council to look at. Because traditionally that first work session, the council makes appointments or you either make decisions to that time or again decide to interview. So that's all I have.
Questions for Neil? All right, and that brings us then to general business, which is, the first is the discussion on the request for 25 miles per hour in Tegabo.
That's me, do I do my new thing?
Just wait, wait just a minute and then-
And you have in here the petition that was submitted. And I asked Ryan, our engineer, to address, you know, the request and what state statute may provide in terms of these requests and, you know, quite frankly, other requests for adjustments in speed limits.
First of all, with this area, I would suggest that our next subdivision, we have a little different naming convention on roads, because I don't know how many times I have to look at all the roads. They all start with Meadow Ridge, Meadow Lane, Meadow Circle, so. Obviously, this is a common thing that's, you know, goes through a lot of discussion reviewing communities is speed limits. And there are several statutes set up in place, so there's consistency throughout the state on how those are, come about, right? Some of the, the ways that we, we can go about and getting speed limit sets that are enforceable is one, one way, right? Or you could go post speed limit signs all day long, but if they're not enforceable, then you're not obviously gonna have drivers obeying by the signage you put up. And if you're not gonna enforce it, you're probably not gonna have something that might even be enforceable if you don't have any enforcement out there. So there's all kinds of things to discuss after you get through the process. Probably the process that I use the most in communities is looking at the roads with current conditions and see if they qualify, which is typically referenced as residential roadway, or could I establish a rural district, rural residential district or an urban district? And really, when it comes down to those, basically, your residential roadway is a street or a town road that is less than a half mile in total length. So kind of some of your dead end roads, like a long cul-de-sac or something like that. In this case, two of those roadways that I think that would mimic that. Who's all familiar with the Tegabo development? Or should we pull a map up? Could we pull a map up? Maybe that might be helpful too.
My other computer, if I can get my other computer going.
You got that, I'll start on the north end of the, the development where you got that little loop road that's by the apple trees and all that. That certainly would fall within that category of a residential roadway. You could post 25 mile an hour in there. Maybe you don't post anything in there because, could you really go much faster around that curve? Yeah, I don't know. But in that other one-way-in area, that's kind of the, you got, you drive in and you do the one-way loop around and then you come back out the same way. That certainly would fall in that category too and you could post that at 25 and it would be enforceable. But really, I think the concern is the, the main road through. You know, the development's not completed yet. Really, when that second phase or the future phase that gets completed, that's really gonna be your main road when it's all said and done because of the alignment of the road. But right now, we got, you know, several turns and stuff like that. So we start looking at other areas within the development based on spacing of dwellings and stuff like that, driveways, roadways. This is where maybe-
I'm getting there.
Yeah. So I, I do believe that a significant portion of this development would classify into the, the rural residential district. That means you would have a posted speed limit of 35 and that would be enforceable. Once you get by the, the boats or the community area and you start working eastward down to Newgate, you're not gonna distinctly qualify for that because that's where, you know, the community drain field is and you're not gonna have driveways in the future. But you do got some, several sharp curves, including a 90 degree right now. And just for consistency, you could build that into the resolution that this should be, you know, posted as enforceable as a 35 mile an hour zone. I know, talking to the residents, one night we spent a good portion of time talking about, you know, my understanding of state statute rules and what I practiced before. And I think those would apply here, but you would have a posted enforceable speed, speed limit of 35. I know 25 is what's been requested. I just, you could post it at 25, but if you get people appealing their tickets and you just, you're gonna then have to deal with that stuff at the end. And I don't know exactly how that works on a contract basis with the city and in the prosecutor. Would you be paying more money to a prosecutor to, dealing with those types of appeals over time once it's known? But so, but once you go through, back up one more. There is one other option. I don't think it's, it would apply to this situation. You can, you could request a speed study. That's typically done by Min Dots. I know about, right now they're about eight months out, just to check on that. So basically, they would come in and they would shoot the speed of traffic going through there at different days, different times, just get a average of speeds and they would take the 85 percentile of that speed limit. And that's what you would then suggest their posted speed limits. So I think we're gonna be probably a little higher than, you know, the 30 for sure. So I think we're still right where we're at, 35. But, you know, when it's all said and done, what I've all described to you, you would put into a resolution and we'd formally adopt this as creating these districts. In this case, I feel you would qualify the majority of the road for a rural residential district, which could be a posted 35 mile an hour speed district and enforceable. And those other two little areas we talked about could be 25. Things to consider, yeah, now you got signs, how are you gonna enforce it? Are you gonna have extra patrol through there? Are you gonna set up speed carts? And can the public borrow or the county post speed carts? So those are the things that we've done before in other communities. The speed cart has deterred a lot of speed.
Was that that sign?
And some of those, does yours gather the data in it too? So we know what Ashley's wants?
What's the speed cart? Is that the sign?
Yeah, it's a portable trailer, just like what is-
The one coming to town here?
Yep. Yep, it's just a portable one that will post a speed limit sign on it and it reads the, reads the speed back. So I don't know if it, I've never heard of it according to data, so.
So the one that Forest Lake has right now, they actually record all the data so we could set it up so they can't see it and we'll get them when they come over like a hill, right? And then we've been able to do our own internal 85 percentile before we would make an official request of Min Dot, especially if you know you're close. Because the last thing you wanna do is increase the speed limit when the neighboring area wanted it lower. And we've also, in other communities, use local police departments to do some target runs for us too, just so we get a threshold on, maybe that's a, something that you might wanna engage in Washington County on a more rural road if it ever was an issue. Instead of making that formal request right away, that way you get a sense where you might fall before you go through that formal process. Because once you go through that with Min Dots, what they tell you it's gonna be, that's what it's gonna be, whether you like that speed or not. So, but in this case, I, I don't think a speed study's gonna do you injustice. And when we have options with state statutes that we can be done at a local level. So if there was a direction that the council wanted to have this as a posted speed limits, I could recommend I could draft a resolution that would outline a 35 mile an hour through the, the main developments as we discussed. And we would have that come back in a resolution in December meeting. You guys would approve that, then we would submit that to the Department, or Transportation Commission, just so it's recorded at Min Dot too. So if there is an appeal on a speed limit, the prosecutor can always, or whoever, can then go to Min Dot. So it's just all paperwork in place. Those are my understanding of options.
Okay. Did you wanna come up and speak to, speak to them? Do you want, you have anything, comment you wanna make on what Ryan has said? But if you do, you need to come up here and tell us your name and address, if you would.
I'm Nancy Stalin. My address is 19356 Meadow Ridge Trail, Moore, Marine. Name, address?
You're good.
Okay. I, I act, my personal response without the neighborhood association, I'm just representing the neighbors that live in the neighborhood. There are five homes that are occupied now with elementary school age children and below. I happen to be a grandparent that has below elementary school age that is at my house frequently. I think posting at 35 miles an hour with the curves is not going to be, A, helpful and B, effective in terms of improving the safety for the houses walking down the road to the park area and to the docks and all of the community amenities. There's a number of curves. So at, at 35, I think that the people who are cutting through the neighborhood, that will be their license to go too fast for the curves and that portion of the safety issue.
So you don't think that posting at that, right now, what can they do legally that's not posted?
Rural setting with nothing has been previously approved. I mean, state statute would probably default to a 55, but common sense would tell you you're not gonna drive this road at 55. So could potentially enforcement pull over a driver and say you were recklessly driving the conditions? Especially if you're doing 50. In my mind, if you're doing 50 through here, you're recklessly driving.
But if you posted a 35 mile an hour sign at the two entrances to the development and no place else, that might help people because I know what happens when you drive 50 miles an hour. I remember helping someone get out of their car because it was upside down before the police came. It's not safe doing it that, but that's what the speed limit is. And I do know from other communities that I've worked with, you put in a 25 mile an hour speed zone, it's unenforceable. You're creating a false sense of security for the people who live there. They think that, oh, you're gonna drive 35, it's gonna be safe. I can't stop you from doing 35 because you posted 25. And so I feel good about it and now all of a sudden my kids are running all over the place and they shouldn't be. So there's, there's a little bit of give and take with it. They designed it to try to be curvy and try to help keep speeds down. But there's also a certain amount that the parents have to be, take on some of that responsibility as well. But I would agree with the 35 mile an hour posting. My two cents.
Okay.
Do I sit down?
Unless you have something else, you wanna say something different than you can.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did very well for first time. Anybody else have comments on this?
Given the roads and the curviness, I actually drove through there today and I do drive through there slow, that 35 is too fast. I don't know what-
35 is too fast?
Yeah. I mean, it comes and, you know, you have to, it's a 90 degree turn because the one road doesn't go through and then you take a left and you go around by the docks and it is too fast.
You could always enforce driving too fast for conditions anywhere, right?
Correct. Those are the, those are the main complaints, especially before anybody started residing there permanently, was the reckless driving through that area. And that's like La Cimaga and that, I don't know why it's such a favorite area, probably because the, there's not very many houses on it and through, through Tegabo. So I know it has lessons since people have resided there permanently, but yes, I can and I have cited for reckless driving, so.
So the problem with putting 30 miles is that it, you think it would be challenged or could be challenged? Is that what you said, Ryan?
If it was challenged or an appeal, went to courts, it wouldn't meet the state statutes as defined as an enforceable speed limit. So an urban district or a 30 mile an hour district is that basically you're looking at driveways of intervals of 100 feet over distances of quarter mile. So we just don't have the density there.
Yeah. What about the idea of the, if it's reckless, if it's going too fast, it's reckless and Brandon can do it if there's nothing, no speed limit at all there? So we say it's, it, I mean, I don't know why you can't post it and then say that they were doing that and it's reckless driving for the conditions of this road.
Is there, is it possible, I mean, obviously, you know, you know, Brandon's covering 40 square miles and, you know, targeted enforcement is, is tough. Is it all worthwhile posting an advisory speed limit? I mean, does that allow Indy?
I don't know how that would go.
Ryan?
I would start with the speed cart.
I think that's a great idea.
If, throw 30 on it.
Get some information.
I can do some, what's that?
How long does the speed study take?
To do a Min Dot one, I don't know. I can do, if you guys want to request it. For me to do one, I can sit there, at certain times I can talk with the residences and people who live in there and sit there for a period of time and do like what Forest Lake has done and I can do that, that's just fine for a half hour, hour during rush hour time.
My point being, if the speed study is a matter of hours or days, if the resident, they're basically gonna take the residents driving through there and that's the speed that they're gonna send it at. So if the neighbors themselves agree that we're gonna drive slow this week, that 85 percentile is gonna go lower than if everybody drives the way they do today. And they can help themselves set that bar. But if they don't, then the risk of setting a speed study is getting a high number and then it's counter to what you want.
So we could get some real info without any, whatever the word, I can't think of right now, but have the county do some radar, you know, shots out there and we'll get some data, then you'd be able to say, this is what we shot, right? Because Min Dot's not gonna tell you when they're gonna come out and do it.
Right. Keep Min Dot out until you know what you're gonna get.
You could do that with the speed cart too.
Yeah.
Oh, yours doesn't collect that.
I'll check, I'll check if ours does collect it or not. I'll get back.
The speed cart, I think, sounds like it would be a good idea.
If we wanna take that route, I would first suggest that we have the county go out there and not be seen, so they can get real data, right? And then we would use that and review it. But then in the meantime, shortly after that, have a speed cart out there and see if you can try to change some behavior. But if we put the speed cart out there first, they'll, they potentially see that and-
Now, those roads aren't striped either, generally. So people sometimes just assume that whole 22 foot wide road is their driving lane. And so they can curve back and forth between side to side and they can go faster. Doesn't make it right, but-
They do that even if there's a stripe down the center?
Stripe, that doesn't always help either, but sometimes if people think that they've gotta stay in their lane and it's hard to do, they'll slow down. Whereas there is no lane, they can go all over and go faster.
So if-
There is a cost to striping. And, you know, we, you, probably before you were here, we had a discussion on the policy and our comp plan defines certain roads as minor collectors. And those are the roads that, you know, that we, we will stripe.
Yeah. And I wouldn't see these normally being striped either. I'm just, people will drive, whatever speed they're comfortable driving.
Okay, so what, so we, you wanna move forward with this? And have, ask Washington County to come out and do a speed check? Is that what?
At least Ryan, informally, informal.
Informal. And then after that is done, then do the cart?
Yeah. I can request they get it on the list. And then we have one card for the whole county, like besides PDs and stuff like that. So I just put it on the list of a certain area and then we have one deputy that's assigned to that and then they move it around, so.
All right. Is that, do we need a motion for that or is just general agreement?
No. The head nod again?
Head nod. All right. So we'll start there and we'll see where it goes. Thank you for bringing that forward to us. Okay, and that brings us to discussion on certification of unpaid charges.
We have two resolutions in front of you, certifying the delinquent sewer amounts to, to the county. Notices were mailed to all of the property owners informing them of the public hearing and the chance to voice their objections to having these certified. Obviously, nobody spoke at the public hearing, so in order to collect these funds, we would need to pass these two resolutions. You know, in terms of for accounting purposes, if they are certified to the county for collection in taxes, they're recognized, even though we don't have the money, they're recognized as revenue in this year. And that's where, you know, when we set a budget based upon our anticipated revenues, this would be recognized as revenues because it is certified to the county and your chances of collection of that are very high. But it's a procedural thing in order to collect the funds.
Okay.
I move we adopt resolution number 11 dash 21 dash 17 dash 05.
Can we do 7-6 at the same time or do we need a separate?
We can do them separate.
Okay. Second?
Steve. Steve seconded it.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I didn't hear. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye?
I'll do the next one.
Yep. I move we adopt resolution 11 dash 21 dash 17 dash 06.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to discussion on liability and property insurance.
We have the, let me take action on renewal of our insurance coverages with the league. We need to get this information into them so that they can generate the premium. One of the issue, there are a couple issues that probably, you know, merit discussion, one of which has to deal with the tort liability limit. In the past, we have waived that. Andy, can you comment on that?
In the past, you have, you have waived that?
Yeah, I believe we have.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said.
Oh, we meant.
This is like a double negative in here somewhere.
Yeah.
It's confusing.
No, we have not waived the limit in the past.
There we go.
Yeah, and so the, the cities that I work with, it's a, it, they all do not waive the limit. It's kinda, it's kinda hard to spell out. Under state statutes, you have a cap on your liability for various property damage and injuries and if you waive the tort liability limits, you can purchase additional insurance coverages. If there was some sort of cataclysmic thing that you would be responsible for, I can't really think of a good example, then you could pay more out under that excess insurance coverage. But we never recommend to do that because why take on more liability even if you'll cover it through an insurance policy that's gonna cost you more in premiums? So you have the, but this is a yearly thing that the league still requires you to say yea or nay to, and so we always say, no, don't, don't waive that coverage or don't waive the excess.
Yeah, the, the other issue is one a deductible we've been at since 2012. You know, we've been at $1,000. That has not really proven to be much of an issue. Really, I mean, we're probably at one claim a year if that. The third issue relates to property in the open and, you know, I've mentioned this previously, we do not, we have not covered property in the open. Our agreement with the Veterans Memorial says that we will always provide property in the open coverage for the memorial itself. It is an expensive proposition in that you're basically paying, you know, 1% of the cost. But I mean, it's also if, you know, a tornado came through here and took out all of the light posts for the lighted ball field, we're not insured. So there is, you know, there is a measure of risk in doing so. You know, so things like the playground equipment, bleachers, fences and lighting would be examples of property in the open. The city has not, you know, has opted not to take this coverage in the past and I just, you know, for the sake of it, I just, you know, feel it's important to bring it up each and every year.
So is that, that's not in here in a recommendation option anywhere, is it?
It is not.
Does that mean because you are not recommending it?
I think it's worth decision, you know, a decision. I'm not quite sure what we would insure and whether you would get the value for it because I recognize it is a very, very expensive coverage. I mean, if you look at, you know, the cost to replace, you know, the light, you know, the lights and everything at the ball field, you know, you're probably in my mind, you know, 1% a year, it's gonna may cost you $1,000, $1,500 just for that ball field. I mean, the lights out here at the, you know, at the skating rink, I mean, you know, that, you know, there would be a cost, you know, a significant cost to that. And, you know, it's, you know, kind of a discussion of how much risk you wanna accept.
Well, it's 1% per hundred of coverage.
Right.
You know, I mean, just to have a nominal amount of $25,000 or $50,000 isn't a huge amount of money, but you've got some coverage at least.
So what, $50,000 would be $500?
Yeah.
If my math is right?
Yeah, it's hardly a killer. I mean, and then leaving all that unprotected doesn't make sense to me.
Or do you, do you get, choose a dollar amount or do you say, I'm gonna insure this and they assess its value and you gotta?
Do we have to specify or is?
We can insure it for a value. You can either insure for a value or for replacement cost.
Okay.
Well, we don't specify which items, they're just open items that are in the city's possession.
I can check on that.
Yeah. If they're open items, then we have carte blanche to use the money as we see fit if there's any damage. It's just a question of limit.
I may open for that, but if we have to insure each one separately, we have to look at that.
Yeah, it makes no sense to do individual things. But if you have it collectively, I think it makes good sense to, to reserve in there if you will.
So you'll check on that?
I will check on that.
And since we don't have coverage, there's no time limit for anything expiring.
No. And I think that's something we could probably add.
Is the city insuring the Veterans Memorial? Are we carrying that?
Yes.
Okay. And what if that got vandalized, knocked over and what would the cost of replacing that be?
Their total cost into it, labor and everything was about $50,000.
Well, I, we should query them too to see if they're willing to offset a piece of that.
You know, some of that, I mean, they are providing the city for, reimbursing the city for the sidewalk, $10,000, but I mean, that was part of our agreement with them is that we would provide that coverage.
That's a done deal.
Yeah, the issue is probably not whether, but vandalism.
It's more vandalism that he added.
All right, so if we deal with just what you have in front of us now, you're recommending that we renew the insurance coverage for 2018 and pass a motion to not waive the tort liability.
Correct.
Is there, is there a motion for that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd actually like to make an amendment that we look at the additional coverage for open.
For open items. As long as we qualify that, it's a, a class of items, not one specific item.
We could probably take action at that at the December meeting, I don't know what we find out, but this at least gets the ball rolling.
Right.
So, so, so it will come back?
Yes.
That sub-question will come back to this.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And that brings us to discussion on appointment to the vacant unexpired term on the planning commission. You know, we did, our, had our interviews and we had three good candidates, I think we all agree on that.
Yep.
And I would like to, I'm gonna start with a motion and then we can see where it goes from there. And that is, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Perry Reinders for the following He is, he has a new resident, relatively new resident to the community and has, has made this, made a commitment to make this his forever home, as he has put it. He has both the experience of, mature experience of being a CEO of a large company, so he's had a lot of business experience and, and a CPA background. But he's also a parent of a young child that's getting to be elementary school, so he brings that sense of looking at building the future of the city to, to the role. As a new resident, I think he would provide a fresh perspective on looking at the direction that the city is going to go. He was, I appreciated his thoughtfulness about when we talked, talking about commercial development, the importance of that for the future, but also his looking at what kinds of businesses we want and, as he said, and, and how do we attract them, which is part of what the EDA has been working with. He seems to, seemed to say that standards, ordinances and standards are there to be enforced, but also that there is a measure of common sense, as he put it, that goes with it. I was very impressed and I guess finally, well, he, he was on our capital improvement committee. He had interviewed with us for the comprehensive plan steering committee and at that time we had all been quite impressed with him and kind of struggled with whether to, to appoint him to that or not and, and eventually went with someone else. He had talked about his work and collaborative work and been a member of a management team doing that. And finally, I was impressed with the fact that he attended in anticipation of educating himself more as to what the role of the planning commission was, that he attended the planning commission meeting, he attended a site visit and, and after that, he felt, as he indicated to us tonight, that this would be a good fit for him and something that he could do well and would enjoy. So I am therefore nominating Perry Reinders. Is there a second?
I think we shouldn't move on anything, so I would, as I said earlier, I would support a couple of the candidates, so might as well vote on it, so I'll second it.
All right. Is there discussion?
We've got three really good candidates. I would certainly be happy with him, but he's not my first choice, so.
I, I agree with Chris. I think we, we had three opinions in the other room already and I can, Greg is also a forum, you know, he's here forever. You know, he's umpteen businesses and patents and things, degree in construction management, he's been around this community, he spreads himself all over town, everybody, you know, he's very involved.
I agree with that.
But, okay, but you have a motion up there.
Yep. Any other further discussion?
And I think Bob should abstain because, you know, his son was one of the candidates.
Okay.
Just for a reason for abstention.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. No further discussion. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
I make a motion that we appoint Greg Hamilton to the planning commission for the reasons that I just stated.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
We've covered it all.
We've covered it all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay. So it will be Greg.
There are people coming up that if there may be another opening or two sooner than the norm, that, you know, we can certainly. They all expressed interest in coming back and I think we could do well with any of the three.
You're right. I think, and I think Greg will be, will be.
I think Perry will stick around too.
Absolutely.
All right, we all so, certainly hope so. Okay, so that brings us to then our final item on the agenda. Someone like to make a motion to?
We added one item.
Oh, I'm sorry, we certainly did. Sorry about that.
Due to the very alignment of Clarence Seifert, the, you know, Clarence and Bruce Swinson were parking lot drivers for the city.
Clarence was too.
Yeah. And, you know, one kinda had the southern half of the city, the other had the northern half and they did the smaller roads and the cul-de-sacs. You know, called out maybe, you know, six to eight times a year, out for five hours. But I mean, it's great, it enables us to reach out to people. So I would at least like get approval to start soliciting applications, you know, primarily due to the timing and I'd like to make it a real short period that maybe it's something that we could, if we get some applications in, talk about at the work session so that we can have somebody onboard.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I probably don't even need a motion.
No, I don't think you do.
Okay.
You're good. Very, 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 very sad.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
You know, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.